Have a very special kickoff. We are going to all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Girl Scout Troop 856. And those are going to be girls from Davis Park, Devaney, and Lost Creek. So would you come up with us? And we will all stand. Welcome.
Thank you, girls.
I think we have a board member to thank for that wonderful kickstart to our evening. Mrs. Lobella, thank you.
Yes, so the Girl Scouts are working on a democracy badge. And so we've been talking a lot about a government. And we thought, and one of the things they need to do is attend a public meeting. And so we talked about, you know, the school board has a lot of, a lot of our decisions, you know, of course, affect them directly. So this might be the best public meeting for them to attend. And then while we were talking about that, they asked about saying the pledge. So I asked, and we also thought it was a great idea for future meetings to get younger kids involved. We hear a lot, you know, from our high school or in our middle school groups, but not always our elementary, so.
That was wonderful. Thank you all for coming out and for the parents and guardians for bringing them. That was lovely. Oh, right. And if there are any other troops, scouts of any kind who would like to come and join us to do a similar pledge, we would welcome that. You contact Mrs. Katie Shane for that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Now that we have started off on the right foot, we'll have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Lawrence.
Present.
Mrs. Lobella.
Present.
Mr. Berger.
Present.
Ms. Slower.
Present.
Mrs. Killian.
Present.
Mr. Skelton.
Present.
And Mr. Warner.
Okay. Next, we have some presentations. Which one first? Okay, on my list, I have Student Entrepreneurship Day. Welcome.
So the agenda has Jared L. presenting from Indiana Small Business Development Center. He is actually in class. So we have Brett Taylor, who is also a teacher at North, and Jayden. And you guys are going to present, right?
Welcome. Make sure you speak into that microphone so that folks online and in the back can hear you.
Good afternoon, Dr. Hensel and the members of the School Board of Trustees. My name's Jada Lee, and I'm an alumna of the Vigo County CEO Program and also a senior at Terre Haute North. I'm also a part of the Student Entrepreneurship Day Planning Committee. I'm here tonight to inform you of all of the upcoming Global Entrepreneur Week field trip to Indiana State University and share our work on developing a Terre Haute Student Entrepreneur Day, as well as invite you all to attend. Global Entrepreneurship Week is held each year in November, and this year it's being held the week of November 18th through the 22nd. During this week, Vigo County CEO, Terre Haute North Entrepreneurship Students, Terre Haute Southwest, Vigo, and other surrounding corporation schools, including Sullivan and South Vermillion, schools will be attending Indiana State University to develop new ideas, hear from, and network with local entrepreneur leaders. We have met with the mayor, and he has generously agreed to issue a proclamation of Student Entrepreneurship Day in Terre Haute on November 19th at the ISU DD1 Conference Hall. We would love to invite you all to attend. The proclamation will be at 1:30 PM on the 19th and network, and network with up and coming high school entrepreneurs and celebrate with us. Finally, on November 19th, student entrepreneurs will be showcasing their pitches in a pitch competition and at the Vigo County History Center, beginning at 4:00 PM. Students' names from Ivy Tech, Terre Haute North, Indiana State, Roseholme, and St. Mary's College will be pitching for prizes up to $1,000. Our steering committee would like to thank ISU and Indiana Small Business Development Center and the Vigo County School Corporation Leadership and board members for supporting and encouraging us as young entrepreneurs to continue to grow and thrive. Thank you.
Jada? How's your business going?
Pure girls. So I haven't-
I remember from last year at the CEO program.
Yes. So I haven't done a lot throughout the summer, just very busy with senior year and college applications. But I did sell some products to my boss, and she's been using it at the salon that I work at, so I'd say. A lot of people gave me-
I just wanted to acknowledge that you were one of the students who went through the CEO program.
Yes.
Put together a very successful pitch and did a very nice job and received some very complimentary words from our local business people who were part of the judges.
Thank you.
I think I remember visiting you. Did you also have some skincare stuff that was part of yours?
So it was like a spray and a cream. It could also be used on the skin because all the ingredients were natural.
Yeah, because I remember rubbing something on my hand and going, hmm, this is nice.
I apologize for putting you on the spot over something you probably didn't prepare for, but I wanted to acknowledge the fact that she's been doing this for more than one year, and she's been very successful, and her growth in this has been admirable. So we just wanted to compliment your work.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Can I just ask again, where's the location for the proclamation?
The proclamation, it'll be-
The 1:00 time?
The History Center. It's the DD Hall.
Okay, thank you.
Conference Center, yeah.
Thank you.
Was that on the 19th too, is that correct?
What items are the 19th?
Yes. The proclamation is at 1:30, and then the event starts at 4:00.
Well, we'll look forward to showing up and supporting everybody for that. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. We appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a presentation about the Youth Leadership Summit with Chances and Services for Youth. Welcome.
If you're presenting, make sure you talk into the microphone so we can hear online. So I'm Shannon Giles, due tobacco prevention and cessation. And then, I'll bless you a little bit. Thank you. This is Portlin Shepherd. She is our voice youth coordinator. And the reason she's not doing this conversation is because the leadership summit was literally her first day on the job. So we're going to give a little bit of a break on that. But there's going to be a video that you guys can see if you're not really good at multitasking and listening to the kids and doing that at the same time, you can be sent the video later. But I'm going to let these kids take their way.
Our steering committee would like to thank ISU and Indiana Small Business Development Center and the Vigo County School Corporation Leadership and board members for supporting and encouraging us as young entrepreneurs to continue to grow and thrive. Thank you.
Jada? How's your business going?
Pure girls. So I haven't-
I remember from last year at the CEO program.
Yes. So I haven't done a lot throughout the summer, just very busy with senior year and college applications. But I did sell some products to my boss, and she's been using it at the salon that I work at, so I'd say. A lot of people gave me-
I just wanted to acknowledge that you were one of the students who went through the CEO program.
Yes.
Put together a very successful pitch and did a very nice job and received some very complimentary words from our local business people who were part of the judges.
Thank you.
I think I remember visiting you. Did you also have some skincare stuff that was part of yours?
So it was like a spray and a cream. It can also be used on the skin because all the ingredients were natural.
Yeah, because I remember rubbing something on my hand and going, hmm, this is nice.
I apologize for putting you on the spot over something you probably didn't prepare for, but I wanted to acknowledge the fact that she's been doing this for more than one year, and she's been very successful, and her growth in this has been admirable. So we just wanted to compliment your work.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Can I just ask again, where's the location for the proclamation?
The proclamation, it'll be-
The 1:00 time?
The History Center. It's the DD Hall.
Okay, thank you.
Conference Center, yeah.
Thank you.
Was that on the 19th too, is that correct?
What items are the 19th? Yes.
The proclamation is at 1:30, and then the event starts at 4:00.
Well, we'll look forward to showing up and supporting everybody for that. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. We appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a presentation about the Youth Leadership Summit with Chances and Services for Youth. Welcome.
I don't want to let them sit because whoever wants you on the microphone.
If you're presenting, make sure you talk into the microphone so we can hear online.
So I'm Shannon Giles, due tobacco prevention and cessation. And then, I'll bless you a little bit. Thank you. This is Portlin Shepherd. She is our voice youth coordinator. And the reason she's not doing this conversation is because the leadership summit was literally her first day on the job. So we're going to give a little bit of a break on that. But there's going to be a video that you guys can see if you're not really good at multitasking and listening to the kids and doing that at the same time, you can be sent the video later. But I'm going to let these kids take their way.
Hi, I am Clark Caddick. I am the sophomore class president at North High School, as well as the president of this chapter of ILEAD and VOICE. So what ILEAD is, is it's a youth-led advocacy group that's primary focus is to educate and prevent the usage of drugs, alcohol, and vaping in the youth. We partake in a lot of events. Some examples are the Great American Smokeout and Take Down Tobacco. And we also meet with both federal and state government officials each year in our effort to help educate and prevent usage of these harmful substances.
Hi, my name is Reese Kirshner. I'm in ninth grade, and I attend North Vigo High School. I'm the vice president of VOICE. I'm going to talk to you about our Voice Leadership Summit. It's a three-day overnight camp, and it's held at St. Mary of the Woods College. It is for seventh to twelfth graders, and it teaches young leaders how to become, how to become good in leadership and become a good leader. During the camp, there are workshops led by different leaders in Vigo County, team building activities, and we also go to Indianapolis. We take a tour of the Capitol Building and lots more. Overall, I always have so much fun at the camp. I think it's a great opportunity for kids my age.
I'm Vincent Kelly. I'm a ninth grader at Terre Haute South Vigo High School. I'm secretary. And one of the activities we did was we did a bunch of icebreakers and team building exercises, such as a scavenger hunt. We went to the sandbox social together, and we took a personality test. And these helped us learn to work better as a team, how to get to know each other, and to learn names, and how to step up to be a leader in our teams. We also went to the State House in Indy where we met public officials and learned about government at the state level. We also did an escape room in Indy, which helped us learn how to get through tricky situations and puzzles, even under pressure. And then we also went to the ISU Outdoor Center, and we did partner and group games to learn how to work in groups and how to work in partnerships.
It just so happens that Ms. Brett Taylor was one of our leaders this past year. She did a leadership, she did a leadership workshop with the kids, and it was, it was really, it was really an engaging time. So we had 35 kids, rising seventh graders through 12th, and they always keep saying they want us to add days to it, but we can't. By the end of the week, we're like, maybe, maybe a little bit. But they're happy to answer any questions you might have.
So when you went to the State House, who did you meet with?
We met with Senator Gray Good. I think we met with Tony Path. I don't think we got a chance to, but we met with Gray Good. And yeah, we toured and did a lot of fun things there.
Sounds like fun. What's next, what's the next big event for you guys coming up?
The next big, Red Ribbon Week is coming up, and we have a lot of fun things planned for that.
What is Ribbon Week?
Red Ribbon Week, it's a drug prevention week that, yeah, nationwide drug prevention week where a lot of elementary schools are taking it, have like spirit weeks and stuff like that, and like take down drugs and stuff like that.
So you're, I'm going to put you on the spot. You went to a leadership summit. I'm sure that part of the leadership summit is what do you tell someone who may be considering this, and why should they not do so? So I'm going to give you an opportunity to say here why people should not smoke and vape, especially teenagers.
So a reason why mostly teens should not vape is, one, it takes, what, 11 minutes off of your life every time you hit something or smoke something. It's overall just bad for your body, too. And it also has a really bad negative impact on like your learning ability, just thinking, and overall. And it's illegal, too.
That's a good one.
Well, thank you. I apologize for putting you on the spot, but I figured that that part of the leadership summit was, how do you go out and converse with other kids to try to help them understand why these aren't good choices?
These kids, these kids are really good at speaking up, but we have a lot of kids that they, you know, getting up in front of the crowd is not their deal, but they, they work it out. They find a way, and they become really strong at being advocates.
Thank you for making a difference. You're making a difference. Thank you.
Is there a certain thing that a student may need to do to contact one of you if they're interested in joining your initiatives, or is there a meeting or something?
Portlin, I think your contact information's at the end of the video.
Yes, yes. So they'll contact me, they'll email me. My email is right at the end of the video. And then from there going on, I will add them to our Google Calendar, and they can join at any meeting that is comfortable for them and accessible for them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Good stuff. Good stuff.
Okay. So we are going to move into the rest of the business meeting at this time. It's a great time to kind of, if you've got other stuff to do and you need to go ahead and leave, you're welcome to do that. But we're going to move into our first call for citizen comments tonight. I didn't receive any notes, and there's no more that have come in. So seeing that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second that.
Motion and second, questions or comments from board members? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, Mr. Cox, personnel report.
Good evening. Administration seeks approval of personnel and professional leave report as presented this evening.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel report and professional leave request.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to October Accounts Payable Docket. Mrs. Wilson?
Good evening. The Board Finance Committee met Friday afternoon to review the board, the Accounts Payable Docket that's found in your board packet this evening. Several claims were pulled for review, and we'll just go over a few of those. One was commercial radio service for $98,875. That represents the purchase of digital Kenwood radios to transition us from an analog to a digital radio system. Those were paid from the Homeland Security Grant. Everwhite Corporation, $15,390. I think last month, we had a claim pulled regarding the improvements made to Woodrow Wilson. This was part of that project, the installation of Everace Dry Race High Gloss Resurfacing Material to convert the Woodrow Wilson Blackboards to Dry Race Boards in all classrooms. That was paid from the operations fund. Jigsaw Learning LLC, $241,220.56. That was a functional student curriculum for grades K through 12 for six content areas. The bill is in two parts, the digital subscription, which is an annual fee of $93,800. That's paid from the textbook rental fund and the physical books and resources to implement the core program. Represented $147,420.56 of that bill, and that's for the six-year adoption period and was paid from the Title I District Glide Off-the-Top Funds. Two claims were pulled that dealt with the same thing, ProCare Therapy and Sunbelt Staffing. ProCare, $30,307.20. $13,608 with Sunbelt Staffing. And that is for, we contract for speech pathologists for those services due to the shortage that we have found in recruiting SLPs in our schools. That's paid from the education fund. And finally, Titleer Technology, $79,293.55. That's the transportation software system VersaTrans, annual maintenance and support, including Geotab tracking, and that's paid from the operations fund. With that, we respectfully request permission to pay the claims as listed in tonight's packets.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the October Accounts Payable Docket.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, questions for Mrs. Wilson?
No, but thank you for your explanations of the questions that we had. And I'd just like to say again that sometimes there are questions from the citizenry about our finances or whatever, but no one seems to attend our open meetings, and they are open to the public, so.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion to approve the Accounts Payable Docket. And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Very good. Moving on to our 2025 budget approval.
Included in your board packet this evening are the resolutions that complete the 2025 budget adoption process. If approved, these documents will be uploaded to Gateway this week in accordance with guidelines established by the Department of Local Government Finance, the DLGF. Tonight's packet includes the following resolutions. Budget Form Number Four, which is the ordinance or resolution for appropriations and tax rates. This form lists all budgeted funds, the Education, Operations, Debt Service Operating Referendum, and the Inland Casino Fund. And includes the proposed budgets, levies, and tax rates that we have discussed at the previous two board meetings. Form Four shows a proposed combined budget for 2025 of $171.8 million with an advertised tax levy of $50.1 million and a combined tax rate of a little over a dollar and 18 cents. During the budget preparation process, several estimates were used that will be reviewed and revised by the DLGF to ensure compliance with levy limitations and approved growth quotients imposed by the state. The assessed value will also be updated to reflect the county's reported increase in AV, while our calculation was based on 90% of last year's assessed value. Ultimately, when finalized by the DLGF, we believe that our 2025 tax rate will be very comparable to our current 2024 tax rate, which is less than a dollar. The next two documents are the resolutions adopting the capital projects and bus replacement plans, as presented and included in our budget books that were distributed at the last board meeting. The CPF Plan is a three-year plan for capital expenditure, and the Bus Replacement Plan is a five-year snapshot of the anticipated bus replacements. Keep in mind that by statute, buses are on a 12-year replacement cycle, even though the published and proposed plan covers only five years of that cycle. We feel this budget reflects our continuing efforts to promote fiscal responsibility as we acknowledge our responsibility to the taxpayers of Vigo County. With that said, we respectfully request approval of the required 2025 budget documents presented in your board packet this evening. Thank you for your patience as we work through this process together.
Thank you for your work. I move to approve the ordinance for appropriations and tax rates and the resolution to adopt the bus replacement plan and the capital projects fund plan.
I'll second. Motion and second, questions or comments? I want to just remind everyone that even though this is the last leg of this, we have recorded on our YouTube channel, previous presentations from Mrs. Wilson that are extremely thorough, going through all the different funds. And education funding can be very complex and confusing, and she has broken that down very, very well for the community to go back and look at. And I would encourage everyone to do that. If you have questions, or in course, to reach out to board members. But thank you very much.
The budget books are also out there online?
And the budget books are online. Yes, thank you for that. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion to approve the budget approval and the associated resolutions. And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Dr. Newport about the Cold Water Assessment Report.
Thank you. Each year, the Vigo High School Corporation performs a voluntary cold drinking water assessment and buildings on a three-year rotation. Testing is performed by an independent outside contractor specializing in indoor water quality, ACM Engineering Environmental Services. The most recent tests were conducted this past July. Within the interior of each school, representative samples of the cold drinking water were collected at drinking fountains and food preparation locations. Test results were analyzed for lead and copper concentrations, and we received a full report on September 6th. In addition to the consultation with ACM Environmental, we also report our findings and consult with the Vigo County Health Department, with full transparency of our process, data, and actions being taken. These relationships enable us to use multiple sources to review the data and take action to fine-tune our living maintenance plan continuously to keep our aging facilities, water delivery, and drinking supply systems safe for consumption. Following my conversation with the Health Department last year, they suggested a change to our procedures to give us better data for lead and copper within our water lines. This change represented a first draw sample to be included in our report, in addition to the flush draw sample that we have taken previously. The difference is that the flush draw represents the water use in a building that is much like the daily normal use of a facility, whereas a first draw is taken after a building has remained stagnant for use for at least eight hours, and the sample is taken straight from each water fixture while the water has been resting in the pipes and fixtures. This first draw helps identify any lead or copper that might be sitting in the lines when the water isn't moving through the pipes. Recommendation to update our data is a best practice approach and was introduced into our process this year. A summary of the results and our action plan is as follows. Nine schools were tested this year as part of our three-year rotation for lead and copper concentrations at Devaney, Demming, Terre Haute North Facility Operations, Wabash, Terry Town, Otter Creek, Fuquay, and Sugar Creek Consolidated. Testing took place in July, and the results came back September 6th. Immediately upon receiving the results, action was taken to begin replacing fixtures with elevated levels of lead and flushing protocols taking place. Five schools, Devaney, Demming, Terre Haute North, Wabash, and Terry Town, had samples that included elevated levels above the state-led action level. It is noted that every location with elevated lead levels was elevated for the first draw sample only. In every case, the flush sample, which represents the daily usage of the building, levels were below the state action level. This new first draw data allows us to dig deeper into the condition of piping and water delivery in our buildings with a focused effort. ACM Engineering Environmental Services recommended changing the faucets and valves at the location of each sample and flushing the faucet for 10 minutes. There are multiple recommended practices for- There are multiple recommended practices for the length of time you can flush a fixture. When studying the data, we noticed that most of the fixtures are in locations that are not heavily used, so we implemented a three-hour flush approach. These actions have already been completed, and to assure we have proper actions, a re-sampling will take place in early November. Eight schools, Devaney, Fuquay, Otter Creek, Demming, Terrell North, Wabash, Terry Town, and Facility Operations, had samples that where copper action level was equal or exceeded the copper action level for state action. ACM Engineering Environmental Services recommended flushing the faucets at each location. Again, we implemented a three-hour flush approach, and this action has already been completed. Our re-sampling will also take place in early November. It is interesting to note that one building, Sugar Creek Consolidated, did not have elevated levels on any sample for lead or copper. Sugar Creek Consolidated is one of our youngest building and turns twenty years old this year. With the introduction of new data collected with first draw sample, we are adjusting our district procedures moving forward. Last year, after looking at data from past reports and including the data into our living maintenance plan, we implemented a flush protocol in all buildings over the summer, and depending on the data, more often than other buildings. With the new data provided with the first draw sample, we are utilizing a best-practice approach and will be implementing a flush protocol on all fixtures that are used for consumption over extended breaks such as fall break, winter break, spring break, and summer break. This would be a best practice regardless of the age of facility. Given the data collected with the new procedures for the first draw sample, the ECSE will need to get a new baseline data for all schools throughout the district so we can make intentional decisions on needed actions with our water delivery systems. Rather than wait for the three-year rotation to come around, we're going to conduct cold water assessments this year at all the remaining twenty-one facilities, pending scheduling with ACM Engineering and Environmental Services. The entire three-hundred-and-fifty-one-page report will be posted on the Vigo County School Corporation website tomorrow. This report in its entirety was shared with the Vigo County Health Department along with the actions we have already taken and our plan moving forward. It was agreed that we have a good and proactive plan, and the data shows, along with our actions, that our buildings are safe for occupation. This is a board update. We are not asking for any action from the board tonight, but I will take any questions or clarifications you might have.
So to be clear, everything is safe right now for drinking and cooking and all of that?
That's correct.
Mm-hmm. So I heard corrective action, I heard proactive action, and that's what a living, breathing maintenance plan is designed to do. So thank you for that. Appreciate the attention given to that, to fix the procedure that needed to be fixed.
Thank you. I'm very thankful to the Vigo County Health Department. They've been very helpful in consultation, as well as giving us information and data about the flush protocols and the information of how we can implement those into the process.
And we'll continue with our three-year program that we've had in the past also.
We're first going to test everything to get a baseline with this new data point. And then, once we have that new baseline, we'll then reconvene on the pre-year rotation. Yes, we will continue doing it.
Are unexpected costs, where do we cover that from?
We have a line item in our operating budget specifically for indoor air quality and our water test approach. And given the, each year, since the funds fluctuate a little bit, it has enough built into it within our budget line that we can handle the additional costs within our operations budget. Thank you.
I would just like to make note that I appreciate the partnership that the School Corporation does have with our Vigo County Health Department, and it's always good to remind the community how much the school plays a role in our community and those organizations working well together. So thank you for that leadership, Dr. Newport.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the update. And we'll move on now to the high school HVAC project change request.
This evening, we are bringing a change request for a total of fifty-three thousand, five-hundred and seventy-five dollars to Terrell North, fifty-three thousand, five-hundred and seventy-five dollars to Terrell South, and one hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred dollars to West Vigo High School, for a total of two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to alter the plan for the transformers at all three high schools as part of our high school HVAC project. We do have an owner contingency that we are using to pay for this change, so there's not a change to an existing contract, so this isn't really a change order, but rather a change request. With this large amount, we want to be transparent to the board and our community on this cost to the project and also have an opportunity to explain why the costs are necessary. We have an owner contingency in the amount of one million dollars, and those funds will be leveraged for this unplanned change request. However, we felt it would be best practice to update the board and ask permission to utilize the owner's contingency to keep the process transparent and complete. As a brief reminder on what the owner contingency is and how it works, you may recall at the May sixth board meeting, the total budget for the high school HVAC project, including the contracts with Schmidt Associates and Garmong, totaled twenty-three million, one-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. The contract with Garmong includes a guaranteed maximum price of twenty-one million, five-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety dollars. Because the bids for the HVAC, plumbing, general trades, and electrical came in under budget, it allowed us to allocate one million dollars for an owner contingency so we could quickly react to any unforeseen issues and keep the project unpaced. Given the scope and size of the project and the age of our facilities, we felt it was best to keep these dollars allocated with the project. However, at the end of the project, they come back to the corporation to be reused for something else. This is an important detail, given the extra deadlines that loom over this project. This transformer update is a perfect example of an unforeseen issue that can often arise when working on a fifty-two-year-old facility. As a reminder, these owner contingency dollars are not part of the CMC contract share savings and would come back to the district if not spent on this project to be allocated to other needs at our high schools. It is designed to be spent on the high schools in the event of an unplanned contingency or with a future project, either way. To better understand the scope of the project this evening, Eric Ramel from Schmidt Associates and Mike Peterson from Garmong could join me. Early in the process, a plan to place an additional transformer on each site was considered. As you know, this project has been moving as quickly as possible due to the extra deadlines, and as we worked through the process with Duke Energy, it was discovered with a second tier of engineers that a single transformer on each site would be safer rather than having two transformers as originally planned. This is a necessary change, and had this been implemented sooner, the scope and price of the project would have been reflected in the original bids had it been foreseen earlier in the process. To help with transparency, Eric Ramel with Schmidt Associates will help explain how the new plan is different from the original plan, and to help us understand why there's additional costs, Mike Peterson from Garmong is here to help show the scope of the work is different and adds costs to the project. In order to Eric.
Sure. Close to the mic there. All right. So if you recall from previous conversations at North and South, there's a large electrical upgrade that was part of the project. It was not a comprehensive electrical upgrade, but a partial step in upgrading the entire electrical system. So we'll start with that, understanding that reminder. The original plan at North and South was to install a new pad-mounted transformer provided by Duke Energy to power the new gear that would be the hub and the center of power for that building in the future. And really, so there's a new set of gear that's going in the building, and the old gear is staying in place. So basically, the new gear is powering the central plant, which is the main focus of the work. The existing gear always was going to remain in place to power the rest of the building. What we're changing is the way that those two pieces of electrical gear are being fed. So like I said, the original plan was to set a second transformer for the new gear and leave the old transformer serving the old gear to be dealt with later. Now, there's going to be one transformer that will power both pieces of gear. So it will still, as originally intended, power the new piece of equipment. And the increase in cost that Michael will speak to really comes down to a couple things that changed. One is that the existing switchboard has to be disconnected and refed from the new switchboard. So basically, what we're doing is we're taking one transformer, one point of entry for power, it's powering the new gear, the old gear is being powered by the new gear instead of by the transformer, if that makes sense. So there's an internal connection that needs to be added. And then, there's an additional cost for feeders to the existing switchboard. So basically, what I mentioned, the new, what this all does in the end, and this is true of North and South and West, the additional work that's happening really does, what it does is it sets us even further forward for the next projects, right? So we don't have two transformers on the, and we don't have two meters at North and South anymore, we'll have just one meter. So there's four PDFs up there. I don't know how much benefit it'll be to going through that. I was going to try to explain at just high level, but of course, if there's questions and you want to get into the details, we can do that. At West, there's a little bit different scenario. There are existing two, well, all the work is around the middle school and where the gym was added onto the middle school. There are two existing transformers, one that serves the majority of the building and the other one that was installed, we believe, when the gym was added on. That's why there's two transformers there now. So again, in the spirit of this work is additional work, but it sets us up for the future, and we can get into the drawings and I can explain that to you in more detail, but generally, what's happening is when we consolidate to one transformer, as you can imagine, the underground feeds around the building have to be reorganized in order for that to work. In addition, there were two existing distribution panels that in future phases of work, we were going to eliminate. Those are now going to be eliminated as part of this change order, and their loads are all going to be transferred to the new gear that's powered by the single transformer. So I didn't want to get into too much technical speak. I wanted to keep it high level, but in general, what we're doing is we're consolidating to a single transformer at each of the three high schools, and the additional work sets us even farther forward for the future work.
In terms of the cost, as John spoke earlier, we broke it down between all three schools. So North and South, obviously, the price are very similar in what their scopes are. You know, before, when this work was originally looked at, there was very little shutdown work in terms of power for this service. What's going to happen now is we're going to be taking down the schools over spring break for North and South, possibly north, spring break for West, possibly next summer. But the scope of work that the contractors have has expanded. It's not as easy as going in and unplugging outlet and plugging it into a new location. You know, there's conduit that has to be ran four-inch, two, and there's various circuits, underground, overhead, all that is what's feeding into this cost. When you look at the West T work, that is magnified by the amount of circuits there. There's somewhere north of thirty, I believe, is the circuits that we're relocating over there that run from thirty amp to nine-hundred amp. And the amount of work that is going to take to get that done is quite, is much more significant there than it is at the other two schools. The other two schools are just kind of cookie cutters of each other. So, you know, from a high-level standpoint, there's a lot more labor, a lot more time, and some significant shutdowns that will take place at all three schools to make this work happen. So all that is what factors into the pricing. You know, it is a complete, it's a different methodology is being used to power the buildings. And to Eric's point, it does set you up for the future work so that you can progress at a, I would call it, a smoother operation. I don't know if there's ever anything that's smoother renovation, but that is the goal, so.
I just had a question. I think Dr. Newport said this, like overall, this is like improves the safety of the buildings. Could you explain how one transformer would improve the safety versus having them divided? I guess, I don't have a degree in electrical, anything, so I'm not understanding.
If I may, may I make a recommendation, then we go into discussion?
Yeah, we need a motion before we do that, so we need to hear that from you.
Given the scope of the work requested and a thorough review of the process, the administration is asking for approval of the recommendation, the high school HVAC project transfer change request, to come from the owner contingency funds.
I'll make a motion to approve the high school HVAC project transformer change request as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion and second? Okay, back to questions and answers.
Could you just quickly restate her question, or could you restate your question?
What's safer about having one transformer?
Say again.
What's safer about having one transformer?
What's safer about having one transformer?
That's the gist of the question. Well, I would say, well, especially in the case of West, you got a new transformer, so it's more reliable. All transformers are going to fail eventually. As far as having two existing transformers next to each other, I would say another safety, what I understand from talking to our electrical engineers, is that if you do have a fire in one transformer because it's failing, you don't want to have another one right next to it. That's the gist of it.
But is there a backup transformer? You don't have a backup, then if you just have one?
We, so in the plan, they were feeding separate portions of the building, so there never was a true backup. It was more a staged approach so that we, because that's why I began my comments with, remember, we didn't have money to replace all the electrical in the building. We had to make, we had to stop somewhere, and the somewhere was having two electrical services in the building, especially at North and South, I'm directly referring to that.
Also, by having one service of a transformer coming into the building, in the event that we have to cut power to the building, it cuts power to the entire building to where our people can go in and work safely in an emergency. And an example of that would be the West Vigo High School fire from a year ago. After the fire department cleared everything out, and we had everything for the night, we cut power to the whole building so that any of the melted wires and things couldn't cause more problems throughout the night. By having a single point of contact to cut that power, someone else might not, can go into the building and not accidentally get into electricity and fed from another source. And so, having that single point of contact for our maintenance people and also the emergency personnel is important to be able to shut it off at one location.
I agree with John there. I mean, one disconnect for everything, it's clean, and we know it's safe. We can out and work on it, too. Couple of comments I'd like to just add. You know, there's no need for the extra transformers here, as they stated and everything, too. I think reliability's better, and you don't go through the rates twice, because you have two transformers there, guys. We don't do the rates twice, so I think, as they say, we're setting ourselves up for the future, too, as we continue. So job well done.
How long is the shut-off in the summer or spring break or whenever? And what high school has?
So for North and South, we're targeting the five days of spring break. It's five days of spring break. It's a little, I'll use the word simpler, it's not as convoluted there. At West T, we are still in the process of evaluating. We're, at the moment, we're saying that we can do it over spring break, but as we've worked through some of the issues with this and come up with a plan, I think we're going to be better off doing it next summer. And I think you're going to be in the five-to-eight day, if not longer, timeframe, so.
West Vigo is always an interesting one to work with. It's a building that has four different generations throughout its process. Since it was opened in nineteen sixty-one, it's had, both, I'm talking the high school and the middle school, has had three other construction projects over the years that have added and expanded, and each one has electrical codes from that time period that have been implemented. And so, we're constantly tied into old electrical components, old switchgear, and so this kind of of process now that we're doing is putting a base level of modern two-code switchgear in all of our electrical rooms, fed off of these new transformers, that then, as we work at future projects, we can come back to and, and feed back into and replace and update, whether it's adding outlets for Chromebooks, because Chromebooks didn't exist in nineteen sixty-one, or adding electrical compo, other electrical components within the building. And so it's kind of adds to that a little bit as, as well as making the project, which makes it a little bit more challenging for a longer, longer shutdown, as we tie into multiple generations of systems.
Anyone else? No? So now we have a motion on the table to approve this transformer change request for the high school HVAC projects, and it's been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to throw you off.
All right, moment of confusion. We're gonna finish up by talking through our next update from Gibraltar facility study. Welcome. And welcome, this is your first board meeting.
It is my first board meeting.
Yeah. All right.
Sorry, that was what I was commenting on, which is what caused the confusion.
Yeah.
I apologize for creating that confusion.
So, good evening. At this time, I would like to welcome Chris Kingery with Gibraltar Design. He's here this evening to continue our facility study presentations. Chris will be sharing feedback and input provided by all elementary school staff members and from onsite conversations with elementary principals. As a reminder, Gibraltar has already reported input that has been provided by our VCSC tradesmen and our secondary school teachers and staff. Tonight's report includes data from all of our elementary teachers, staff, and administration. While all elementary schools are included in the report, we'll focus in on four schools and highlight the input from Terry Town, Frampton Grove, Lost Creek, and Sugar Creek Consolidated.
Thank you, Mr. Creason. Pleasure big with you again this month. I want to thank the board, I want to thank the central office team and all the principals for the time that they have given me throughout this process. I, I was able to spend time at all fifteen elementaries during this past month. I was able to see arrivals, dismissals, lunch duty, fire drills, informal conversations with students. I was asked if I was the president, I didn't know how to take that. I was asked if I could grow hair or why I didn't have hair, and I appreciate the open and honest, honesty of children. And then when I was at Dixie B Elementary's pitching day, I was forced to eat a cookie that I still think about. It was a delicious cookie. So I loved my time, and just as a reminder about the, can you have me that clear? The, we had over ninety percent staff participate at the elementary levels, and we have coordinated in three slides per school. And again, we're only going to cover four schools this evening, but in its entirety, it will be posted online, so you could see each school individually, but in the interest of time just covering four, it's separated by one slide with areas of appreciation. You know, for example, at some of the schools, the new drive that we heard about, as well as new outdoor learning shelter, to the technology upgrades, those type of things that are appreciated by staff and the investments over the last few years. And then also, a slide of recommendations, and you know, when you have over ninety percent participate, that's a powerful voice that tells you, there's some recommendations for those schools as well. And then the final slide for each school is just principal input and overall considerations. And it's a reflection of us reviewing the data together with the principal, walking and talking and visiting some of those, and then bringing my experience to the table as well. So a few precursor slides that I do want to share about, and, and I want to provide context, my mom taught first grade for thirty-three years. She has not, she retired about fifteen years ago. I have two sisters that teach. My mom still goes every year to help them set up their classrooms, and she wants to put the classroom the way that she had it. All the kids separated, all facing forward, and my sisters have to tell her, hey mom, teaching and learning is different. And so I just have this slide as a, as a reminder about what we're asking the teachers to do at the elementary level is different than a lot of us experienced when we were going through. What we're asking students to do, and it's more social, they're using more tools, it's more manipulatives, there's more supplies, what we're asking them to do is different as well. And I say that because you think about when the schools were built and what we're doing in those schools now, we've adapted our teaching and learning, and there's a lot of success stories of staff that have figured out a way to make it work within the space that they have, or repurposing, you'll see that a lot today too, repurposing some spaces that are no longer relevant and making them into something that's needed for today. Also want to talk about experiential learning. We know that we have a lot of outside partners coming in, there's a lot of hands-on activities, there's a lot of community partnerships, where it's, it's not just sit and get and lecture hall all day at the elementary level, so want to make sure we cover that. And also, small group instruction, if you remember, you used to stay in your classroom all day long. In elementary, they're learning all over the classroom and all over the building in different areas, so having those small group instructions, not only just for the instruction, but also the outside support that comes in to support the students. And then media centers at the elementary level are not what we are used to. They're not going in and picking out a book quietly and go sitting in the corner. There's action happening all over the place, and your media centers have adapted in many ways to make sure that they're accommodating the news, like making it a hub of learning. And then finally, STEAM came up a few times in the survey at the elementary level, and you know, a comment that stuck out with me was, we used to talk about STEAM as something we wanted to do, and we wanted to incorporate and include it, and, and the last few years, it shifted to a want, to a need. And so finding ways to do STEAM at the elementary level is critical. It also, to be aligned with what you are offering at your middle school and high schools from career training, education, it is a great opportunity to have that entry point in the elementary.
Also, just to clarify, we're used to the term STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, and math. STEAM also includes the art, so that we are concentrating on incorporating and encouraging the creative aspects of science, technology, engineering, and math. So wanted to clarify for those in the audience who have heard the term STEM before but were confused by STEAM, I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. They were like, great, another buzzword, but we just added one letter in there, but it's a very important letter. Two different ways that we collected data, one was in, in form like this, bar graph, just to be able to find what those common agreements are. And then the second, very helpful, there's just narratives, open response from staff that participated as well, that's in the principal's hands as we speak. Now, moving on to just overall, some celebrations and first impressions, as I visited, I tried to find some alignment between the elementary schools, the repurposing of spaces, we already talked about to meet current needs, the consistency in elementary program, I did like that, no matter what elementary school, I, it was, it was pretty clear I was going to see similar programming, so you can tell there's a lot of collaboration among the principals. Consistency in the upgraded classroom technology, I imagine a district this size, that was a pretty big lift, but very good model of created a benchmark of what you wanted to do and then implemented that. Saw a lot of student-first school leadership, I loved walking around with the principals, and they would stop talking to me as soon as a student came up, and I loved seeing that, because that tells me they're there for kids first. And then also seeing student leadership happening in all areas of the building. We talked about it last, but at the last meeting, but want to bring forward at the elementary, your school police officer program really impressed, very multi-dimensional, you can tell they're there for the right reasons, they're very connected with kids, but also, they're very good about clearing me and why I was there before I was able to come in. Now, evidence of care for school facilities, still there, walking through the buildings, you can tell that they're cared for by your custodial staff. And then finally, you know, even though there's things for consideration each of the elementary schools, you could see the principals and the students like being with pride when they talk about their school, they're very proud of their elementary schools. So moving forward to the first school that we're going to cover today, Farrington Grove, pardon me, flipping through these quickly. So starting with Farrington Grove, some appreciations, you know, of visually welcoming appeal as you come up, designated student areas are easily supervised, the layout of the building fits nicely for elementary students and support, and then the lighting levels generally pleasant in public areas. Some areas of recommendations for Farrington Grove, the year-round comfortable temperature, which I know that you guys are aware of, sufficient parking, evening and event use, they explain some of the challenges that they have at Farrington Grove, and then the rooms being adequately sound, isolated. And then finally, you know, one of those common agreements of recommendations would additional storage for teacher and student materials. Moving on to overall considerations, it was clear that all the space available throughout the building is being maximized. We did talk about the need for a safe and secure front entrance, you know, we talked about your school police officer program is fantastic, but could be even much more if there was a safe and secure entrance coming in that main area. And then LGI for programming, that would be like large group instruction, having a space where you're bringing in, or bringing a whole grade level together for an event that's not like the gym or not the cafeteria. And then last, a common theme across elementaries, additional student support spaces for instructional support. The elementary, we have a lot of community members and a lot of community programs that are helping to support kids and school-based programs, and so having space for them to be is important. Moving on to Lost Creek, some of the areas of appreciation, visually welcoming appeal, the drop-off and pickup locations are easily supervised, provide safety, sufficient staff parking for daily use, cafeteria is easily accessible for the community, and then those natural light levels, they were very appreciative of the natural light that they have at Lost Creek. Moving on to areas of recommendation, that year-round comfortable temperature, evening, it's, it's a pretty common theme for elementary. I'm, I'm not sure you want to build a parking lot for an evening event at elementary, because we know when there's an elementary event, a lot of people show up, but there's never really enough parking, and that came up. Moving on to restrooms, a number of fixtures adequate throughout the building, so that was a common agreement of needing additional. And then last, student and teacher storage in the classrooms. Moving on to overall, maximizing all available space that was happening at Lost Creek, safe and secure front entrance, removing built-in storage from the classrooms, just to create, if you've not been into those classrooms, the student storage and teacher storage is right as you enter the classroom, so one of the things from staff and principal was being able to remove those so that you would have more of a free flow in and out of the classroom. And then additional student support spaces as well.
Want to clarify, Jackie, they don't want less storage, they just don't want it in the location it currently is because it blocks sight lanes.
Right, I understand, but where are they gonna put it?
Understood. No, that's a great question. That doesn't mean they don't have the concern, that's why we hired them to help us find solutions.
I will tell you, there has never been a staff survey where they said they, they're okay with less storage, so they definitely like their storage. So moving on, just thank you for providing that clarification. Sugar Creek Consolidated, quite a few things, obviously, you know, Dr. Newport mentioned, one of the, approaching twenty years old, but one of your newer buildings, but a lot of things, visually welcoming appeal, the car drop-off and pickup, sufficient staff parking, designated student areas, the layout of the building easily to supervise students, and then location and number of the restrooms was something that was appreciated. Moving on to recommendations, comfortable temperature provided throughout the building, evening event parking, appropriate space for students to de-escalate and process behavior. I think we talked about the middle and high school, but especially the elementary, having a place of, of students just having a day where they can just relax, de-escalate, get calm, and then get back into the classroom, so more of like a proactive and a reactive. Proactive meaning, you're scheduled times where they go into a space to just proactively relax, and reactively is, is just one of those days, and so we'd rather get them right and then get back, back to class. And then finally, student and teacher storage materials at Sugar Creek. Overall considerations at Sugar Creek, again, maximizing space, need for safe and secure front entrance, we talked about the de-escalation space area for students, considering opportunities for STEAM, and then again, additional support spaces for instructional and community partners. Walking through Sugar Creek, there were groups, you know, in, in the hallway as classes were passing by, and it was kids that were getting a double-dose reading, that was just the space that they had at the end of hallway corridors to pull out and support kids.
Can I ask one more question about that storage space? Is it for materials, or is it for like coats?
So it, it actually came up both. So in, depending on school to school, and we, the overall recommendation for elementary, we'll get into, but the solution from depending on if a building was built during a certain time period, at that time, there was a standard of what you did for student and teacher storage, and then it adapted, and then maybe a new wing was built, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago. With that new wing, there was a new, you know, standard of how much storage was needed, so you don't have like an equal playing field across the, the elementaries or even from class to class, and so that's part of one of the benchmark things that we're going to talk about a little bit later.
I hear that in all levels of schools, is that teachers or educational assistants don't have a place to put their coats in the winter time, and for the adults to put their coats.
It's just one of those things that vary from place to place, but it's also, as you know, because you're a former educator, we're pack rats and we keep things because we know that we'll always need it sometime in the future.
That's true.
And that also helps with storage aspects.
And then a teacher retires and passes all their belongings on to the next teacher that's taking their spot, so, yeah, that's a good point.
Can I, since we're kind of paused for questions, the issue of students having space to de-escalate or needing a sensory break or something, so it says that there isn't appropriate space, but is there some space in each building for that to happen?
They do, and every school has a solution for it, it's just a different solution based on the space that they have, so.
Right, but everybody has something.
Everybody has something, but if it is a school that has some available space, because maybe they're not full on their enrollment, they have like a classroom or a, a, a large area where they're able to have students come in, work through stations. If it's a school that is at capacity and they're utilizing everything, that space is a little bit smaller, so it may not be for everyone, it may be just for targeted students.
Got it, thank you.
But yes, I'm glad you asked that, because every principal, and you could tell through collaboration or district initiative, they've implemented something, it's just not the same in every school.
Yeah, thank you.
So moving on to our final school, Terry Town. Quite a few things in agreement of appreciation and celebration, the visually welcoming appeal, outdoor learning opportunities there were, came, that's a pretty high percentage that feel that way, designated student areas are easily supervised, and then areas of the building to display work and achievement, you can tell at the elementary, it's pretty important to make sure that you have those spaces, and then the natural light at Terry Town is appreciated by staff. Some areas of recommendation, that year-round comfortable temperature, classroom learning spaces, having adequate outlets, you know, Terry Town was one of your buildings that had additions, and so the standard again, and that new addition is different than what the existing classrooms, so having that equitable playing field of as far as outlets and other things was something that came up. Parking for evening event use, and then disagreement on the number of fixtures and adequate, are adequate throughout the building, and that comes across in this final slide. At Terry Town, some of the things that you've seen at the other schools, about safe and secure front entrance, unable to close off portions of the building for evening, very, you know, our schools are very active, there's lots of outside groups coming in and use them, Terry Town is one that does not have the opportunity to kind of close off from the rest of the building, so if you're there for something, you have access to the building and classrooms. And then final thing, I'm sorry, additional student support spaces, and then need additional restrooms in the upper elementary wings, that new wing that I say new, but it's, it's not new, but the newest wing that was built there, the distance to walk to, where I was able to clarify with some of the staff input, is the distance for students and staff to go to restrooms a little bit farther than they would hope for. Okay, overall, for all the elementary schools, I tried to find like some common things across the fifteen elementaries that explore solutions for safe and secure front main entrances. We talked about the middle and the high school, but it's definitely something at the elementaries that we should continue this conversation. Additional student support spaces for instructional and community partners, STEAM, moving from that want to the need, and then Mrs. Lower, what you mentioned, creating that benchmark for, for. And then Mrs. Lower, what you mentioned, creating that benchmark for facility, like refresh, learning spaces, electrical outlets, marker boards, storage. So being able to say at all of our elementary schools and every classroom, you would have this, create that benchmark. And then you get to find out where do we need to go at each of the elementary schools because it's not the same at every school. Some have a little bit more than others, and some have a little bit farther to go. But at least creating that benchmark is standard. And then finally, that interior and exterior updates to reflect and enhance the community pride that you have. For us on our next steps, thank you for allowing me to get through those four schools. If you want me to go through the other 11, I'm happy to meet you in the parking lot, and I'll do that.
That's fine.
You sure?
I'm sure.
Okay, all right. Next steps for us, we're going to continue to review and analyze the information gathered district-wide and bringing it all together. Follow-up on staff input is needed, just, you know, kind of like questions that came up tonight. I asked some of those questions too, to help learn more about some of the things that surfaced. Weekly progress meetings, we appreciate our time with the Vigo leadership team. And then school board meeting on November 18th. What we plan to bring back, I'll show you an example, but it's been a lot of information as you guys know, and I mean, the binder's getting thicker and thicker. I'm going to show you an example of what we're going to bring to you in November to just simplify the information. And it's just checkmarks. It's taking all of your schools across the district and looking at it by school, or you're looking at it by like need, and then seeing where that is at each of your elementary schools, and then also your middle and high. So we feel like it would be a nice summary matrix that would help to be a go-to place to get a, you know, snapshot of the district and the district needs from learning environment back to facility needs as well. And then know that we are planning community input meetings, looking at January, February, we want to get through the holidays. Obviously, we don't want, we want people to enjoy their families and enjoy their time, but looking at the beginning of 2025, coming together and think of the process that we've done with staff, we'd like to do that with the community as well.
Thank you, this is very thorough.
Can I just ask, I mean, I know with the 90% participation, which is wonderful, but in your conversations with staff and teachers and those in the buildings, are they appreciative of this type of approach?
I would say that there wasn't a school that I visited that didn't have something to say about that. They appreciated. And I think also, you know, no offense to architects and engineers, I think it was a helpful conversation because I lived their life and I was in their world for 15 years as a building principal. So to be able to have some, go to the next level of conversations was appreciated. But I had, you know, it was, it was pretty clear that they were happy to provide the input.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Like your process, and I'm sure your experience has added validity to the way you've gone through this, and again, I'm pleased with the 90%.
It is, that is something to be proud of.
That is exceptional.
Yes, it is not the norm.
No. Well, I will also just say, having sat through facilities studies previously, this is completely new. This part of it has, in my experience as a board member, not been done before, and I think was critical, something we needed to have done. So very, very helpful information.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. At this time, it's our second call for citizen comments. I have not had anyone sign up to speak tonight, so we will move on with information from our superintendent, Dr. Hensel.
Thank you, and it was about a year ago that I gave you an update in the fall on things that were going, and so what I like to do is to give you another update as to things we've been working on. Before I conclude with my typical closing remarks highlighting the work of our schools, teachers and students, I wanted to provide the board and the community with an update on progress we have made in the past year in a manner that more explicitly speaks to how we are rectifying the neglect that has happened over the past decade or two. To begin, we recognize that our facilities have lacked consistent, meaningful investments since 2004. To that end, I commend this board for approving about $30 million during calendar year 2023. These investments in our facilities are significant, the work is still ongoing, it doesn't just get done in one year. Although it does not solve all of the HVAC prod issues at our high schools, as we were reminded earlier this evening, this work is a necessary first step to establish a foundation for us to be able to address the many other issues that are being identified through this ongoing facility study. The investments that you have approved also allow us to invest in our other schools and move us toward proactively maintaining our schools so that our elementary and middle schools do not end up in the current condition of our high schools from a facility's perspective. Just as a reminder, Devaney, Wabash, and Deming, I think are nearing their 50th anniversary. I believe they were built in the 70s, and so therefore we are getting close to their 50th anniversary. Yeah, 77, so we're three, two, a couple of years away from their 50th anniversary. And Honey Creek is now more than 30 years old. I bring those up because as you have noticed throughout the reports that Gibraltar has done, many of the components have a lifespan of either 20 years, 30 years, or 40 years. And we're getting to the point where it's not just the high schools that have work to be done. So I want to point that out because this study is not focused on the high schools only, it's been about all of our buildings, so that we can put together a comprehensive plan about how we're going to move forward. The board's recent commitment to invest a little more than an additional $11 million in the next year continues this commitment of rectifying the situation that developed over the past couple of decades. From the perspective of the ongoing facility study, on which we received an update just a few moments ago, it is also different in that it includes all of the buildings, but it also solicits feedback from our employees about how teaching and learning is different from what it was when our buildings were first constructed. And more importantly, it is allowing each of you as a board member to gain valuable insight into what our educators need to provide learning environments that support our current and our future students. In other words, we do not want to simply make them look better, we also want to make them more functional and effective at supporting the learning needs of our kids. Additionally, as we were reminded earlier this evening, the study will begin turning its attention to gathering feedback from our community. We could do that in November and December, we just think that doing it during the holiday season is a poor timing, so we're going to be gathering that feedback in January and February to make sure that anyone who wants to participate in it can do so. The reason this is important is to not only understand what our community wants in our facilities, but to also understand what they will support as we move forward. We have continued to increase transparency by implementing best practices utilized by many other governmental units. For example, the board adopted Diligent as a piece of its software in our website, which has allowed us to create a location on our website whereby any member of our community can access the information that has been presented to this board, such as the cold water report that we heard earlier today that will be uploaded on there, and the Gibraltar facility study update that we just heard. This part of our update also contains information about budget information, board policies, board packets, et cetera. And this portion of our website became available to the public last April. We recognize that we still have work to do, but we have made significant progress in making this information more easily accessible to our community. We are now also working with Parent Square to update the overall website so that additional information such as school calendars, curriculum guides, and other things can also become easier for people to access it and find it on our website. We have also updated our procedures for releasing board packet information to align with best practices so that we increase the likelihood of receiving applications from highly effective, experienced teachers and administrators from other school districts who might be interested in moving to Vigo County without jeopardizing their current status at their current jobs in case that recommendation is not approved. This transparency also applies to conditions necessary for learning. For example, we updated our procedures for our voluntary cold water assessments to reflect best practices. That's where we did the first draw samples this year, which had not been done previously. And those results we shared here this evening in a public setting. The updated procedures uncovered a situation that has likely been ongoing for years. Similarly, we continue implementing our voluntary program to test indoor air quality in our facilities, and like a year ago, we will also share those results when those test results come back to us, and we will upload it on our website like we did a year ago. As we prepare for our biannual audit, this is with State Board of Accounts, please be reminded that we continue to rectify past directions that have been given by previous administrations, so that we are in compliance with federal and state requirements. For example, we recently realigned pre-K funding streams so that they, we do not use multiple federal funding sources to support the same program, which could put us at risk of losing future funding. By realigning the pre-K funding, we prevent future hardships when the loophole is anticipated to be eliminated and closed. And more importantly, the realignment puts us in a more ethically defensible position. The work of realigning the pre-K funding fixed previous concerns and also freed up Title I monies that can now be used to support our striving elementary learners. The work we accomplished with this funding realignment also lays the foundation for potential expansion of pre-K opportunities in the future, so that we can accelerate learning for even more of our community's three and four-year-olds. Meanwhile, we continue supporting the efforts of the Chamber of Commerce, Casey, Indiana State University, and others in the community to support daycare for infants through age two, but more importantly, we continue to work, and we have accomplished, and the work that we have accomplished places us in better position to serve a greater number of three and four-year-olds and accelerating their learning by expanding high-quality pre-K learning experiences at some point in the future. Another example of rectifying the past direction includes realigning programs that utilize federal grant dollars to ensure that we are not using grant funds to supplant programs or personnel that should be funded through the funding distributed via the state basic tuition formula. By correcting previous misalignment, we decrease the risk of losing future dollars. This work is tedious, but it is important in making sure that we have needed resources to support our students who struggle the most. The work of our business department in partnership with our curriculum and accountability offices has resulted in greater access to learning supports in reading, writing, and math among all of our elementary schools instead of just those designated as Title I. The realignment of administrative responsibilities reduced the number of information silos that we have. We are confident that by doing so, we are less likely to repeat the misalignments that were recently discovered within our high school biology and English course offerings. These misalignments potentially put students at risk of not earning the Indiana College Core even though they were under the belief that they were doing so. Because our secondary education department previously worked independently of our curriculum department, those working to create the Indiana College Core options were either not aware or ignored the agreements with higher, our higher education partners that we already had in place. The realignment of these administrative responsibilities that was implemented this past summer increased communication among the curriculum staff and our secondary schools, which allowed us to identify these issues that needed to be corrected. As a result, all three of our high schools and our curriculum department are currently working together to correct this situation and avoid the potential consequences that the misalignments could have created. This is critically important, given that there are going to be new graduation requirements adopted by the State Board of Education sometime in the very near future. Some of our most important work is updating our procedures to create better learning opportunities for our students. As we have reported previously, we are implementing the High Reliability Schools Framework to guide our school improvement efforts. I want to elaborate on what this means. To help those who work in the private industry understand the context of this work, the High Reliability Schools Framework, or HRS, as I'll refer to it from this point forward, is a continuous improvement model that is similar to Six Sigma or other Deming-related continuous improvement processes. It is based on defining what is important. In the case of a school district, what is important is making sure that we create the conditions for learning by applying the best practices revealed through more than 50 years' worth of research on effective schools. After defining what is important, we measure it to determine how we are doing. At our recent HRS training, our administrators received the results of surveys that were completed by parents, students, and employees. These survey results allow us to begin learning more about what we are doing well in terms of creating safe, welcoming, supportive, and collaborative learning environments, and those things that we can simply do better. As we analyze the data, we will determine what needs to be improved, and then we will develop an action plan to improve it. Unfortunately, we're not teaching machines, computers, and robots, we're teaching humans, so there is not one right answer to how we should make these improvements. Therefore, we provide flexibility for each school to determine what best meets their needs and reflect their respective school populations, as well as the expertise of their teaching staff. Those of us who have more than one child understand that what works for one child doesn't necessarily work for the other one. Therefore, it is difficult, if not impossible, for us to control the situation as Six Sigma would recommend. However, we can create systems that increase the likelihood of creating the conditions necessary for learning, and that is what we're working to do. By engaging in the work of HRS, our administrators, our members of each school's school improvement team, and eventually, greater numbers of our overall teaching staff are increasing their levels of expertise in teaching and learning, and increasing their level of knowledge and understanding about the research that goes behind creating effective schools. In other words, we're building professional expertise and professional capacity. The HRS framework also allows us to define the performance measures that are most helpful and useful in creating learning experiences that are better for our students. More importantly, the HRS framework empowers our schools to make decisions about what they can do to improve learning in their schools without waiting for the district office or the state legislature to tell them what to do. In this regard, our district office is shifting from being a compliance agency to being a source of assistance and a partner in achieving excellence. To support this work, we've updated our salary and wages last fall with a focus on the early career employees. A great teacher can overcome poor curriculum, but a great curriculum cannot overcome a poor teacher. Therefore, it is essential for us to create the conditions necessary to recruit the most talented educators to Vigo County. Beyond increasing compensation, we also joined our university partners to identify potentially great student teachers to work in our schools for a full year through a grant that we were blessed to receive. We partnered with Indiana State University to align our education career pathway, and hopefully, which will hopefully increase the future pool of teacher applicants. We partnered with Indiana State University to create summer school opportunities on the ISU campus so that we are hopefully increasing the number of students who are thinking about pursuing a post-secondary education and taking away the intimidation of being on a higher education institution. Along those same lines, we have partnered with Ivy Tech to expand the current need experience into a one-week-long summer experience that will help our students better understand the course of study opportunities that are available at each of our high schools. And we continue having discussions with all of our local higher education partners so that we can figure out how to make Vigo County School Corporation not only a great place for our talented educators to work, but also a great place for our students to learn and for our employers to meet their workforce needs. We are singularly focused on moving forward with a focus on serving the needs of the learners that we are blessed to serve. I am not focused on protecting the adults who benefited from the previous status quo. I do not aspire to create a system where our students are satisfied competing only against one another and only for local accolades. We aspire to create a system where our students learn what it takes to compete with anyone from any community. As many of our successful graduates have demonstrated, Dr. Terry Hoare, Dr. Meneghini, Cam Cameron, Anthony Thompson, Brian Evans, Dr. Greg Bell, and many, many others, if you are from Terre Haute, you can do anything. We want our students to understand that and believe it. We want them to choose to stay in Terre Haute because it's a great place to live, learn, and work, but we also want them to know that their opportunities that we are providing them will allow them to be successful anywhere they choose to reside. We just hope they choose Vigo County. choose Vigo County. Before I conclude, I'll leave it open in case you have some questions or some comments or need for clarification.
My comment is very simple. That is what a highly effective evaluation looks like in real time for a superintendent of public education. Very well done.
Any other questions?
Doing great things, all of us. So proud to be on this board. Thank you.
I will reiterate, I'm very proud to be a part of this board, to work with these individuals at this table and to be under your leadership, Dr. Hensel, and your team. Thank you.
And the progress that is planned is ongoing and the hard work that substantiates those progress plans are endearing and constant. And it's just an ongoing process.
And it's not easy. It's not easy. It's difficult, but we know where we're going and that's, that's everything.
I do have a few, four bullet points that I want to do. But before I do so, this is my annual recognition. Some of you probably already noticed the pink tie. Before I conclude, I want to recognize that this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I wear this pink tie in October to remind me of the struggles that my mom has overcome so that she is now an 11-year survivor of breast cancer. So I also want to take time to thank all of our students, teachers and other community members who have done something or plan to do something to encourage and support those undergoing cancer treatments, regardless of whether it's breast cancer or a different type of cancer, to celebrate those who are cancer survivors, to take steps to prevent the likelihood of being diagnosed with cancer and to support the researchers and the many healthcare professionals who care for cancer patients and tirelessly work to find a cure for the many different forms of cancer. With that said, I want to congratulate the South High School and North High School marching band who qualified and competed in the ISMA Scholastic Class A Marching Band State Finals this past Saturday. Both bands have made tremendous progress through this, throughout the season. I can also say from personal experience, they made our community proud. They did an outstanding job. And South High School Marching Band earned a fifth-place finish at this year's state finals. They only recognized the top five bands. So in terms of placements. I also want to congratulate our South High School Cross Country Boys Team and our South High School Cross Country Girls Team for winning the Cross Country Sectionals this past weekend. Good luck to each of those teams as they progress through the IHSA Cross Country Tournament, which will conclude by the time we meet again. And congratulations to North High School James Belmar for winning two matches this past Saturday at the IHSA Single Regional Boys Tennis and qualifying for next weekend's state quarterfinals competition. If he wins on Friday, he qualifies for the state semifinals in the Saturday morning. If he wins Saturday morning, he will be in the state championship game or match Saturday afternoon. And to those who had fall sports seasons or other activities that are concluding right now, congratulations on persevering, continuously working to get better and completing a successful season. To those still competing in one of our tournaments or activities and to those who are about to begin their respective tournament, good luck as you represent Vigo County and the Terre Haute community.
It's an amazing list of accolades and great things that our students are doing. And yes, congratulations to those band kids. Wow.
That's exciting.
I think I'd just like to say it's really easy to be critical of our school corporation and things that we do. But I would like to challenge anyone, if at some point just a conversation you're having or a student you see, just celebrate those small positives, those big wins, because I think it truly makes a difference for students. I have a senior right now struggling to finish his college applications. But I think one thing to say, if any kids are watching or parents, to encourage your kids to reach out to those educators or other adults in schools that have made a difference in their lives, to ask for a letter of recommendation. I think it means a lot to those that are asked. And of course, it means a lot to those students' futures.
And that's a timely saying. They need to get on it.
Yes. Please do it.
I'll just add, I was able to attend a couple of different things recently. The West Vigo Middle School, I thought a buddy bench. So I was able to attend that and that was wonderful. It was our first outdoor one, I think, because most of the presentations happened inside and like we unveiled them. This one, we unveiled outside. So that was fun. And then this past weekend, my kids and I attended the, I'm going to mess this up, the CSE Coordinated Health Program. They had their second fun run. And they presented recently for us about it. So we attended at the Learning Lab and they did a fun run. They did stretches. They got healthy snacks. There was a craft. And the kids there were just having a blast. They also let them dress up in costumes. So it was great to see. And it was lots of elementary schools represented. I think I saw Sugar Grove, Lost Creek, Devaney Kids. I mean, it was just a really nice thing. And something else that's also been presented just before, but the, my son got to participate in Lego Robotics at the elementary level. And it was fun hearing things from his perspective. Because, you know, we've heard from the high school level and that they were hoping to do that outreach. And then to see it from the other side and seeing a fourth grade kid like fall in love with coding and want to do nothing but coding, that I had to remind him to get homework. And then a couple of us got the opportunity to do the WTWO telethon for Hurricane relief. And that was, that was fun. Catherine came with me and helped me answer some phone calls. So we had a good time. And it was just wonderful to see the community come together and raise funds for communities going through hard times. So.
Thank you, board members who did that. Appreciate that very much.
I'd just like to say thank you, Dr. Hensel and team for working real hard, for our employees, our students. Proud of you. Thanks.
The first six months you were on the board, I think we definitely don't have a sheet of awesome.
We did. It was a, you know, white fire, baptism of white fire type of thing. The last year, I see so much more improvements in walking through the schools. Attitude is different. I, it's, I think we've come a long way and I think there's a lot of things that we can, we have yet to accomplish, but they're, they're out there. We can see them and I think we're going to get there.
Second that.
I'd just like to say, think responsibly and vote.
That's right. Get out there and do it. It's a privilege and an honor and a duty.
Yep.
Anything else for the good of the order? All right. Our next meeting will be Monday, November 18th, 2024, 6:00 PM here in the Administration Office Conference Center. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
Everyone go home.